No, not okay. Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting from Wednesday, October 20th to order. At this time, I have a moment of silence for whatever you need to consider, think about. Thank you. Alderwoman Dickman, if you please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Brian, City Clerk, if you please call the room.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, everyone, again, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance here and anybody who's viewing on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind, as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with all Davenporters and people throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. If anybody, especially folks in here, have a cellphone, if you'd be kind enough to put it on silent, turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking in here. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. You're encouraged to do so during the particular items on the agenda during the standing committees. You also have an opportunity to address the council with business portion at the end. You have five minutes. Please address the council as a body and not any individual. We're asked to limit your remarks to five minutes, and please observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Corey Spiegel, is there any update?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. So, we'll move right to public hearings. There are four, all in community development. So, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss those. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four public hearings this evening. I open the first public hearing on case ORD 21-02, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled "Zoning", by amending various subsections thereto. Before the public opinion, I will have Ms. Berkeley come up and explain what this public hearing is about.
Laura Berkeley, Development Neighborhood Services. This is a zoning text change associated with creation of a new zoning district, the intent of which is to help revitalize our center part of the city. In addition to that, there are a few things, as we continue to fine tune our zoning code, that we have also addressed. There's a few changes in the use matrix, largely to make sure there's consistency throughout our code, as well as one that we identified for the daycare center, to potentially put daycare closer to where people are employed. It's something that, as a special use, though, we'd want to be very careful on where that went and what other uses would be around it. In addition, there's some changes to the setbacks for the C1 district in particular to reflect the character of neighborhoods, so that in areas of C1 where they're further back from the road, they can continue to be, but where they are closer to the road, the buildings would need to continue to be closer to the roads. Exterior lighting standards are being revised to kind of reduce some of the nonconformities, allow higher exterior lighting in commercial and industrial districts, and then to avoid lack of maintenance on parking lots that do not conform with our landscaping code. We are removing the word "resurfacing," and that would give us a staff discretion on if something requires the addition of landscaping along the streets.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is on case REZ 21-04, being the request of the City of Davenport to rezone 143 acres, more or less, of property located near 320 West Kimberly Road, generally being bounded by Northwest Boulevard, Kimberly Road, Brady Street, East 42nd Street, Welcome Way, and the North Lot Line of North Park Mall, from C3 General Commercial to CC City Center District. Once again, I'll have Laura Berkeley come up and explain this rezoning before we go to the public.
All right. So, this is assigning the actual zoning district to a specific location, and so that's why it's a separate piece. So, we treat it as a typical rezoning. The notification process was followed as if it was a normal rezoning.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Our third public hearing is on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located at 503 West 15th Street to Brandy B, petitioner. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Our final public hearing is on the proposed conveyance of a portion of 601 East Blackhawk Trail to Ethod Properties LLC, petitioner. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name and address, or Ward, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ted Ravitzer. I'm with QC Hour Realty. We're at 201 West 2nd Street in Davenport, Iowa. I represent Ethod Properties. It's an entity that made an initial offer for the property that the city acquired to extend the rail spread, as I understand it, maybe 10, 15 years ago, into the Eastern Iowa, excuse me, Eastern Iowa Industrial Park. My client had a business that is expanding and needed the additional ground, so I reached out to staff, and throughout some discussions, we presented an offer unsolicited. And it's my understanding that there may be a second offer that has come forward. My client has already expended some money during some engineering work and some architectural engineering and legal work, and so I guess they're asking for, because I was not aware, nor were they, that this would become public knowledge as to what the offer price was, that they have at least an opportunity to make another offer, or however you guys want to see fit. They intend on putting a building on that. They're finishing up a project over in Illinois currently. I don't have a timeline on that. Could be the next couple of years, and then obviously expanding their employment base as well. So, if folks keep that all into consideration, we look forward to hopefully completing the transaction. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment? Step to the lectern, state your name and address, or Ward, please.
Craig Herman. I'm with Herman Farms, Inc., that made another offer on the property in question. We've been the current licensee on the property since 2017. We do farming and trucking, over-the-road trucking, farming in several other states, and we've put a lot of money into the property with mowing, electric service, gate, over the last four or five years. And like I said, our business is expanding. We'd like to put up a building soon and move forward with making it better for everybody. So, I don't see our offer here on the sheet, but I don't know if you guys have that or not. You do? Okay. So, that's basically our plans. If you have any questions, be happy to answer.
This will come up in the agenda here in a few minutes, where the council will have discussion, and if we have questions for you folks, we'll address them at that time. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one else, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this public hearing has been closed. That concludes the public hearings this evening. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is petition, communication of council and mayor. I have just the one. I just want to emphasize what was presented to the council yesterday. The Youth Assessment Program, Family Resources, did a great presentation, and I just want to continue to emphasize and draw attention to that, that that's happening. The Youth Assessment Program, in coordination with Davenport, Beddendorf Scott County, Family Resources, United Way, and the John Deere Foundation, all providing a lot of money to feed and seed this and pay for this for five years. Family Resources is the responsible entity managing and doing it. United Way is the fiscal agent, and it's already up and running. And just for record, if anybody has someone that would like to have this serviced, 563-326-6431 is a 24/7 free service. We'll have a human being answer that phone 24/7. The address on the website, www.yapqc.com, hashtag yapqc, Youth Assessment Program QC. Again, this has been talked about a lot for many years. I thank the staff and the community and the council for sticking with this and coming together to execute and get an RFP out, and then have an entity like Family Resources take that on. They've hired staff. They're already doing referrals and already communicating to the youth. So, there's been a lot of conversation about a lot of things, and this has been talked about for a long time. And again, thanks to staff and council who got this done and led the way, and the Youth Assessment Program is up and running. Again, 326-6431, 24/7. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Honor. I hope the Youth Assessment is a tremendous success, because we definitely need it, and a lot of youth and family need some help. This will be, my last ward meeting will be Tuesday, November 26, at the Kepi Building at the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. This will be the 200th and the final ward meeting for me and the great fourth wards. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to give a shout out to LULAC. I was there on Saturday representing the city for their salute to the military and the first responders. This is a program they have been doing for nine years. It would be 10, but COVID interrupted it last year. You know, as we head into, we're heading into the season where we're remembering, you know, our servicemen, our service people on Veterans Day coming up in November, and I just want to commend them for doing this and making the point that many kinds of people from many backgrounds serve in our military and as first responders and always have defended this country, but they do a wonderful job with their service in remembering not only the Latinx community, but also all communities. So, I really appreciate them doing this here in Davenport. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to announce my own ward meeting. Normally, I have it on the second Thursday, but because of Veterans Day, it's going to be the first Thursday at Eastern Library, which is whatever day the first Thursday is in November, at 6:00 PM, and Clay Merritt will speak on the flood study, a little bit about the capital improvement in the ARPA funds and CIP budget, and we'll be there all night. No, it'll be very good. It'll be very helpful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Humor is always a good thing. I just want to quickly add on to what Alderwoman McGinnis said. If you don't know, look up Tibor Rubin and Albert Rasko and Medal of Honor winners that were not U.S. citizens. Pretty cool, really interesting stories about those two folks. So, thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis, for bringing that. And then one other thing, if nobody else, okay? We have the Halloween Parade, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, potentially. I don't want to jinx it, but it looks like quite the nice evening coming up, at least outline forecast. So, a lot of people involved. We've kind of took a hiatus on some things recently, so if you want to spend a nice evening giving candy to kids and participating, that's a good thing. And then, of course, many people have talked about the November 11th, Veterans Day coming up, so if you can, please come out and support that as a heads up. So, anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, we'll move to the four areas of discussion: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. We'll first go to community development, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case ORD 21-02, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled "Zoning", by amending various subsections thereto. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-04, being the request of the City of Davenport to rezone 143 acres, more or less, of property located near 320 West Kimberly Road, generally being bounded by Northwest Boulevard, Kimberly Road, Brady Street, East 42nd Street, Welcome Way, and the North Lot Line of North Park Mall, from C3 General Commercial to CC City Center District. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
My apologies. I actually wanted to ask something about the first one, and I didn't ring in quickly enough, so I don't know what the protocol for that is, but...
I'd say, go ahead and ask the staff.
Okay, all right. If there's nobody else who's ringing in, I apologize for that. Yeah, I did want to ask about a couple of the changes. If perhaps Ms. Berkeley could probably be the person? Yes, thank you. So, the two I had questions about were the change for bed and breakfast from permitted to special use. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. We felt that whenever there's a bed and breakfast that is considered, that it should have a higher level of review. There's nothing specific about the R1 or R2 districts that would make that okay without some other level of review, and so we wanted to reflect the same level of review that was in the other residential districts.
Okay, and that seems pretty equitable as well. So, okay, the other one I had was the residential care facility, which is now a special use permit, but you're recommending it be turned to permitted in C1. Can you describe what a residential care facility is for everybody here?
Absolutely. So, it's a facility that provides 24-hour medical care. Examples include nursing homes or hospice care, or a nursing home, or assisted living. It does not, it's not an in-house drug treatment facility. That is its own separate use, but anything else along those lines.
Okay, so it is medical. I mean, is that how it...
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thanks for the clarification, and thank you for your indulgence.
Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Laura, or maybe Tom, this is a question for you. With bed and breakfasts, does that cover Airbnbs or VRBO-type rentals, or would that be different uses?
I will take a stab at it. So, we have made a policy-level decision that we monitor Airbnbs, but they, as of right now, aren't required to register as a bed and breakfast. So, it's more of just you renting out your facility. If they do get into a point where somebody's there for more than 30 days, then they would fall under the normal rental license.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Now, when you say you monitor Airbnbs, are you saying that, like, every time someone posts something on that website, that you're going to, like, write it down somewhere in a notebook?
So, our director, he is on the Airbnb website reviewing them. The nice thing about Airbnb is that they do have their own set of standards that are quite restrictive and monitored by another entity. So, as long as something is a VBR, or VRBO, that is registered and has some kind of higher level of review and monitoring agency, at this time, we are okay with that as a level of monitoring.
Now, do our inspectors require any further training to be able to monitor all these places that you mentioned, such as nursing homes, or hospice centers, or things like that? Do that take any additional... I mean, it's one thing to say that it takes a higher level of monitoring, but do the monitors themselves?
For residential care facilities, they are licensed with the state and all under state review.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. So, what I'm going to do here, since we went back to item two, so the last, or item one, the last few questions have been to item one, I'm just going to reiterate that we're in item two now, and ask if anybody, if anybody has any questions related to item two before we move on. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the next item. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property located at 503 West 15th Street to Brandy B, petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of a portion of 601 East Blackhawk Trail to Ethod Properties LLC, petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Okay, so before we go into council discussion, so I want to have Bruce give us an update on what happened. So, there's been a second offer that's come in on this, and I want Bruce to explain it, and then we will start council discussion, and if anybody has, anybody has any questions that they have for our staff, or for the two folks who have submitted offers, then you can ask those questions, and we'll have that dialogue after Bruce's commentary.
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. And I don't have a lot more to add, just to sort of reiterate. You've heard, we had an offer that percolated its way through. When it became public, and as part of the public notice process, the second offer then came in, who is actually leasing or licensing the property from the city currently. And so, in front of you, the suggestion, I think legal might want to weigh in on this as well, but just brainstorming a bit, we are not really set up as a municipal organization to be able to do kind of interactive, and somebody could one up another offer and one up another offer at the last minute. So, a suggestion that council may want to consider in this circumstance is perhaps a sealed bid of some kind that may allow some data in the future for these property owners, because as they both mentioned, it's sort of public now, and their dollar amounts that they're offering is public, and so. And there may be other solutions, too, that could work out as well, you know, but we were just going to throw that out. From a staff standpoint, that might be a nice way to not hold us up too much longer and yet get to a fair and equitable way to decide.
All right, and I am going to take a privilege of the chair and speak first on this item. So, depending on how the conversation goes, of course, I could be swayed by the council, but my initial inclination of what I think we should do is ask for this item to be tabled, ask for our staff to set up a sealed bid for this property, and then bring it back to us in time for the second council in November. And so, I will let us, as a council, have the conversation, and then I would make that motion towards the end of it. The thing I would say to keep in mind here is that the property is in Eldridge. Okay, it is not in Davenport. Both of these uses are suitable for the property. It's zoned industrial, so they're both suitable uses. They both have a legitimate interest in the property. One's been farming it. One has been going down the trail of trying to purchase it and has expended some money on engineering. And the way I see it, our interest as the City of Davenport, with it not being Davenport property, is that we gain as much value back from the property as we can, and the sealed bidding process is fair and is pretty effective at getting the best market rate. And so, that is my thought process in putting that motion out there, and I will open up the floor to the council to discuss. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you. Should it be tabled, or should it be deleted and gone back? Yeah. Reed Dunn, Tom.
That's a bit of six of one, a half dozen of another. I think, though, the thing that Alderman Gripp has in mind here will work. We have instructions out of it to set up a sealed bid process, set a date and time that they have to submit by, and then we'll bring it back no later than that second cycle in November. So, whether you delete it or table it, I believe staff has its direction at this point, and we'll move forward.
All right, thanks.
All right. Seeing no other comments from the council, I would make the motion to table item number four, and then direct our staff to start the sealed bid process and have that process completed in time to bring this item back to the city council, no later than the second cycle of November. There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion has been, has passed, and item number four has been tabled. Okay, and then that concludes community development, so I'm going to ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda.
I move that items one, two, and three be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, community development has concluded, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman Lee. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have nine items on the public safety agenda this evening. Item number one is Third Consideration Ordinance Amending Schedule 5 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "Four-way Stop Intersections by Adding Eastern Avenue at Elm Street." Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Clay, since this is related to the Elm Street Bridge, can you come and just give a quick update of when that road should be open and why we need this stop sign back in place?
Clay Merritt, Public Works. So, the Elm Street Bridge is moving along as scheduled, so probably by mid-November, we expect it to be open for traffic. So, they have a bunch of ancillary work to do moving forward, but the bridge deck is paved, if anyone noticed that. That was a good 12 hours' worth of concrete going down, but we need a stop sign there, once we have traffic established on that roadway.
So, then, once, as the road opens, the stop sign will also be installed, kind of?
Correct. Yep, just like we had it before.
Sounds good. Thanks, Clay.
Anyone else from council? Seeing no one else, that I will move on. Item number two, Third Consideration Ordinance Amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Parking by Adding Ripley Street Along the East Side from Second Street North to the Alley." Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, Third Consideration Ordinance Amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Parking by Adding Main Street Along the West Side from Palmer Drive South 580 Feet." Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, First Consideration Ordinance Amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Parking by Adding Lewis Ridge Court Along Both Sides from Westlake Boulevard East to Its Terminus." Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Council? Seeing none, that I will move on. Item number five, First Consideration Ordinance Amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Parking by Adding Villa Drive Along Both Sides from Villa Court South 300 Feet." Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number six, First Consideration Ordinance Amending Schedules 14 and 15 of Chapter 10.96, by changing Marquette Street at 12th Street from pedestrian traffic signals to intersection traffic signals. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number seven, Resolution of Item number seven, Resolution Improving Street Lane or Public Ground Closures on the Listed Dates and Times to Hold Outdoor Events, I will read all of these components before asking for comment. First is Quad City Arts Festival of Trees Holiday Parade Downtown Saturday, November 20th, 2021, 12:00 AM to 12:00 PM staging area closures beginning Saturday, November 20th, 2021 at 12:00 AM, East Third Street from Pershing Avenue to Leclerc Street beginning Saturday, November 20th, 2021 at 4:00 AM, Pershing Avenue and Iowa Street between East Second and East Fourth Streets. Parade route in place by 9:15 AM. East Third Street from Pershing Avenue to Scott Street, Scott Street from West Third Street to West Second Street, Second Street from Scott Street to the finish at Iowa Street. All north-south streets on the parade route will be closed from River Drive to Fourth Street until the parade ends. And last, under this is Village of East Davenport Business Association, Christmas in the Village, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, December 4th, 2021, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Closures, East Eleventh Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East Eleventh Street to the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. Item number eight, Motion Improving Noise Variants Request for Events on the Listed Dates and Times, I will read all of these before asking for comment. Quad City Arts Festival of Trees Holiday Parade Downtown, see attached parade route, Saturday, November 20th, 2021, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, outdoor music performances over 50 dB. Next, Davenport Parks and Recreation, Fegyvery Holiday Lights, Fegyvery Learning Center, 1800 West 12th Street, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM every evening beginning Saturday, November 27th, 2021, through Sunday, January 2, 2022, outdoor music over 50 dB. And last, Village of East Davenport Business Association, Christmas in the Village, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, December 4th, 2021, 6:00 PM to 9:30 PM, outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that I'll move on. Last is Motion Improving Beer and Liquor License, I will read the new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera, and the second component, the annual license renewals are there for your review. So the first is Christmas Cottage, 902 West Kimberly Road, Building Four, new temporary permit, November 10th through the 23rd, license type Class B Native Wine. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
We're commenting on the annual renewals as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, could you, Council Warner, could you talk a little bit about our discussion yesterday about the issues at Happy Hollow and where that license is? This was tabled, this was a license that was tabled for one cycle?
Well, the license was tabled until we talked to the state ABD to make them know that, that we were looking at this license and reviewing it, and we did that. We've gone through the reports, and we'll have a, we'd asked that the council put this on discussion for next week, and at that point, we will have a presentation for you with evidence relating to the past years calls, in particular, a couple of disturbances that required police response, and a couple of shots fired calls, and we'll give you more information on those next week.
Thank you.
Should I reopen this to the public if they have comment? Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone else from council? Seeing none, item, item, item will move on, and I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on consent except for the license for Happy Hollow, which I request be placed on discussion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed, same sign? Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area discussed is Public Works, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have eight items this evening. Item number one is a resolution accepting the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and pavement associated with the KC Kimberly Hills addition site improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and pavement associated with Prairie Heights Fourth Edition site improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution acknowledging the award of an Economic Development Administration Grant for the design and construction of the water pollution control plant and compost facility, flood mitigation, stormwater, and a fluent pumping system project in the amount, in the amount of $9,968,028. And before I ask for any public or council to comment, I'd like to thank our staff, because I know this one has been a high priority that, that they've been working on. And let me, in case the media is paying attention here, one more time, $9,968,028. I want to say thank you to our staff for going out and getting that one. So with that, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the contract for engineering services for the Duck Creek Interceptor Extension Project to McClure Engineering Company of North Liberty, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $1,203,450. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a preliminary resolution for the FY 2022 Alley Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a motion determining property values for the FY 2022 Alley Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Doorman.
I just want to say with all of these alley ones that we'll see now over the next three months, I guess it would be when we work through the program. One of these alleys is my own, so I'm happy to get it replaced, but that means I will be abstaining from all of these votes, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman, anyone else? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, alleys are a tremendous part of our core neighborhoods, and a couple weeks ago, we had the business districts from the Hilltop Downtown and the Old Village. Every one of them, one of their top priorities was addressing the deteriorating alleys in their areas. So I'd hope in the future, you know, the city becomes more and more aggressive in maintaining our alleys, because they have a tremendous impact, not only to the neighbors living there, but to the businesses. And Northwest Davenport is the largest population of locally owned small businesses in the state of Iowa. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose, anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a motion to ratify change orders one through seven for the main library renovation project to Swanson Construction of Bett North, Iowa, in the amount of $50,337.56. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, very briefly, overall, the project to renovate the library is a good one. Our library, over 50 years old now, I remember when it was constructed in the late 60s. Ed Stone, one of the nation's best architects at the time, he did the Kennedy Center, for those of you who have seen that in Washington DC. This is one of the smaller projects, but really one, a very good one, especially for the city of Davenport and to our credit, and the renovation is a good thing. The only thing I'm commenting about it right now, I, I do always use the main library, although probably all three are convenient to me. But one of the things I noticed, and I brought it up to staff, is if any of you have used it, the automatic doors entering the library, there's a sign that says, "Push hard", and you really do have to push hard. If you push hard, sometimes they can, they, it will open, but even a big guy like me, I've got to push pretty hard, and I think Swanson should not, some money should be held back until those doors are properly working, because, you know, like they say, you don't have a chance to make a, a second first opinion. And the first opinion that anybody coming into that building would be opening the doors, and I think that's an important thing that we have, I, I've brought it up to the librarian staff, but, you know, they've got a lot on their plate, and they maybe don't have the, the power that the council has, so I'd like you to please look at that, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Handel, I'm sure we'll have staff looking into that. Anyone else? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number eight is a motion approving the contract for the East 35th, 31st Street and East 32nd Street Speed Hump Project to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $53,780. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council?
Okay, now I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, my, thank you, Alderman. Sorry, I did, I did talk about this yesterday at management update meeting. I, I certainly would have preferred more discussion about what the criteria are, did not expect to see this project come to us with a contract. We had one brief conversation about it at a management update meeting, and, you know, we have all had, in our other wards, requests for these, and so it, it, it seems a little rash, but I'm probably going to support this, but I, I don't, again, I, things like this where there's already been discussion, there's been questions of equity, things like that about this and how this happens, when we've all been turned down for requests, understandably, and have accepted that, is we, you know, I, I would hope in the future we would have more discussion about something like this, perhaps staff didn't understand how much this is an issue for many of us, especially in some of the older wards.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis, anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on, and Alderman Doorman, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to place items one through seven on the consent agenda and item eight on the discussion agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that concludes Public Works, Your Honor, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman. The last and next area is Finance, Alderman Condon and Alderman Miller will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have four items on Finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution awarding the contract for the Crime Analysis Consultant Services to Idea Analytics of Phoenix, Arizona, with a two-year project cost of $233,164.17. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, do we have someone, Police Chief? Can you get up and explain what our goal is with this?
Paul Sikorski, your Police Chief. Yeah, this is part of a, a grant from the Strategies and Police Innovation, and this is a consultant group that's actually going to help us set up our crime analysis program at the police department, so anything from policies, procedures, to strategies, different reports, how we have things set up with our crime analysts.
So analyzing, what's, what's the goal? Get into the crime area before the crime is committed?
Yeah, the goal is to be able to strategically look at what's happening in our city and who's involved in that, getting that information to our police officers, and devising strategies to, to work on those things is what the strategy is.
Well, let's try to bring our court system in on that discussion if it's possible. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Chief? Thank you, Chief Sikorski. I just want to make sure, all of this, both the, the two positions and this is all covered by the grant, right?
Yeah, this is, this is part of the, the grant, for the SPI grant, yes.
Excellent, is there any money left over in that grant, or for?
Uh, no, there is not.
Okay.
Thank you, Mallory.
Good job.
Thank you for that, though, I try and, trying to get some more.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else, that item will move on. Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $41 million general obligation Corporate and Refunding Bonds Series 2022A. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, could someone come up and give us a brief on this one, please?
Yes, Mallory Merritt, CFO, this is the first step in our upcoming bond issuance that will be likely in February of next year, so pretty much from now until our actual issuance, you will see legal proceedings coming before you. So lots of fun whenever we do a bond sale, so this is just the public hearing to kick off the process.
Seeing no others, that item will move on. Item number three is a motion approving the purchase of a John Deere FC20M Flexwing Rotary Cutter, 5100E Cab Utility Tractor and 520M Loader for the Davenport Municipal Airport from River Valley Turf Inc. of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $95,669.28. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? I apologize if I messed up those phrases, I know tractors are supposed to be green, but I don't know how to phrase those numbers. Seeing no one from council, that item will move on. And final item number four is a motion approving the sole source purchase of civilian crime scene technician equipment from Foster and Freeman LTD of Sterling, Virginia, in the amount of $75,023.60. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Next on our agenda, we, we list our purchases from 10,000 to 50,000, we don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed there for your knowledge. Alderman Miller, would you please set our agenda?
Chair, I, I move that we place all four items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? And that concludes Finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Miller. Next area is are there any ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening, and the next area, is there any public with business? So if there's any public like to say anything other than what was on the agenda, please step to the podium, you'll have five minutes, please give your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and please address the council's body and not in, in, not any individual, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, Bill Handel, High Street in Davenport, Fourth Ward, also Nashville, Tennessee. And I've been advised that this is Water Over the Dam, and I probably shouldn't be bringing it up, but I'm going to bring it up because I spent a lot of time educating myself about that, and this is HVAC replacement project at Modern Woodman Park. I understand in my absence it passed by an overwhelmingly vote of nine to one, and I just want to give some information, Water Over the Dam, because in my opinion, it reflects poorly on the financial and planning component of, of our city. If I were the city administrator, I would be very upset that this thing passed, and if, if I were an alderman that really cared about the city, and I'm, and I understood, what I understand about it, I'd be upset about it as well. Without insulting you, I, I just came back from last night speaking to the Rock Island Board of Supervisors, and they voted 19 to two to demolish the historic courthouse, and I understand this one passed nine to one, so you're in no better or no worse, in my opinion. This packet right here, forty-some pages, is what's called the HVAC replacement for that, that suite area. If that's, that's all it was, these two pages would have done it, because this was the equipment that would have had to been removed. That's the air handling units that were plugging into our central plant. So all they would have had to do was say, here's what it is, replace these units, patch the ceiling, and, and, and if there's anything beyond that, you know, let us know, and that would have been the job. However, what we have is a $60,000 architectural contract for all this, and they're essentially throwing out everything that's in that area. And I could see if it were an issue that the city is doing it for their own benefit, because, for, for the benefit of the, of the owner, but actually, the repairs on the HVAC equipment is, is a city issue. But actually, the repairs on the HVAC equipment is, is a city issue. The city pays for all that. I don't know if the city has been spending an inordinate amount of money repairing those units. I don't think so. Because much like a fire truck, doesn't get much used if it's a, the, the, the suite on a ballpark, you know, 50 games in three hours or four hours apiece, 18 years, it probably lasts a long time. Whereas a police cruiser, they get one or two years. We're lucky. Well, anyway, I wanted to just give you a little more information. Perhaps you understand it, perhaps you don't. And this was a design concept. Change out everything so that everything's gone, as shown in this demolition plan. They're moving perfectly good ceiling tile, ceiling grid, light fixtures, electrical for those light fixtures, fire sprinkler heads, sprinkler piping, air diffusers, ductwork, discarding those above unit, above ceiling HVAC units, which by the way, may be perfectly fine. And perhaps this whole thing was a ruse to get this project going, you know? So the way I see it, the, the deception on this, of this event space not being told to anybody before this project hit was way down the line, leads me to the, it could have been that, that case. So then they're, they're then installing, because everything's been torn out, they're installing brand-new light fixtures, new fire sprinkler heads, new sprinkler piping, new air diffusers, ductwork, everything new. Essentially, the suites, there's nothing left of them except the walls. So if, if it was, I'm, I'm just, I'm just very upset that this is something that our city would, would have done. The, I had talked to the project manager, he said that this was something that had been worked out with council. If, if the council members know about this, why wasn't it, why wasn't it listed in the, in the newspapers about what it really was? No, it was, if the public knew about it, they would have had a holy fit about it.
Thank you, sir.
But I'll talk about those things next week. But thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. There's a motion and, all in favor to adjourn. Have a wonderful weekend.